It's Wednesday, June 28, 2017, 9 o'clock. And we're in Senator Hearing Room, first floor, Cordell Square, 555 Coors Street Northeast in Salem for our Weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everyone. We start our meetings always with public comment. Usually, there's no one that takes advantage, but today, we have two people, Linda Bear and...
Looks like Esther.
Esther.
Watson.
Watson, if you'd like to come up together, do, and introduce yourselves and go ahead.
I'm an MCDS volunteer at the dog shelter and have been there for four years. I'm also a paralegal here in Salem. And we're here to speak on behalf of Rosie, a dog that's in jeopardy out at the shelter right now. As I believe you know, Rosie was kind of a victim of circumstance. She was in an unlocked room in the front of the shelter and a small boy gained access. It happened to be a very tragic occurrence where Rosie bit the young boy. But prior to that, Rosie had been abandoned on the back steps of Willamette Humane Society in a box or crate, is my understanding. She was brought to the shelter and was in an enrichment program to address her fear and abandonment issues. She was put in the room up in the front of the shelter, and when the boy gained access, she either -- I've heard two different variations of the story. She was either in the crate, or she backed into the crate to seek safety. And the little boy presented himself in front of the crate and, out of fear, not knowing where to go from there, Rosie bit the little boy in the face. Now, I'm among many volunteers that feel that Rosie was put in jeopardy and that, as tragic as this incident is, that Rosie deserves a second chance, that what she did was done out of fear, and that she can be retrained. On that note, I've copied off some materials from Best Friend Sanctuary, who has had great success, in part with the Victory Dogs from Michael Vick. They gave 22 of those 50 dogs a second chance, and all but two of those dogs have been adopted out and are living happy, rehabilitated lives. And those are dogs that were trained to be vicious, trained to bite and fight, and they have been rehabilitated. And I believe that Rosie's incident was done out of fear aggression, and that certainly she deserves a second chance. We currently have two rescues, Forsaken Bullies and Willamette Valley Rescue that's run by Sherry LaFevere, who has taken another dog from MCDS that happened to bite a child in the face two years ago, and has had great success with that dog. In fact, that dog is in search and rescue training right now. And she's decided to keep the dog because she loves him so much, and she's worked with him so closely. So there are success stories, and I have some mittles that I'd like to give to you. And that's pretty much all I have to say, except I do hope that the board will consider giving Rosie a second chance. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Linda Bear, and I'm also a volunteer at the Marion County Dog Shelter. And you probably know me from my various emails. I also brought you Roses today from behalf of Rosie, so that perhaps you can -- perhaps that we remind you of her and have you think about her plight. I know that dogs are not necessarily the first thing on people's agenda. Often, dogs at the dog shelter are often an afterthought with all the budget and all sorts of issues of the government running. But Rosie matters. And one of the things that I have found, I mean, I'm still a relatively new volunteer, but one of the things that I have found with the volunteers at the shelter is that they're more or less afraid to advocate by speech, written form, protest, or by media for fear that they'll be fired from -- or allowed or fired, let go, from working at the shelter with the animals. And they say, "No, you know, I don't want to say anything because, you know, I want what's best for the dogs. I want to be able to get the dogs walked. I want to make sure that they're okay." And so, I don't think that it's right when they feel that there's an injustice that they should feel that way. But going back to Rosie's story, I know some of the people here are probably wondering what we're talking about. You've already received my email, but I was just going to read some parts of it. And so, I'll go ahead and proceed. So, what I'm here to say is that Rosie matters, and that dog people vote. And there's lots of dog people here in Salem. And also, many people like dogs better than they do people. And often, I think it was Gandhi who said that the greatness of a nation can be judged by the way its animals are treated. And sometimes, I'm very disappointed in how society treats animals. So we are pleading with you to give Rosie a second -- or a chance. Many feel, and I also feel, that if Rosie's not given a chance, that the tech and the manager who allowed this to occur should be let go. Because you don't put a dog in a room that is unlocked, that has some concern, in a public area that anyone can access. Even though it may be done before, doesn't make it right. Doesn't make it correct. And I understand, I mean, obviously, I was not there, and I hear about the crate, but she would have not been able to have bitten if the crate -- if she had been locked inside the crate, there wouldn't have been an issue. But evidently, that crate door was open. It sounds like the little boy from when I wasn't there. Sounds like this little boy, there was some issue. All I hear is secondhand, so I can't say this for sure. Sounds like there was a child that was not being watched after. Sounds like there was some repetitive asking of the adult to please watch the child, and that didn't happen. And the child was able to open this door that apparently did not have a lock, where Rosie was not behind a lock kennel. So that without being locked in the kennel, that just left her open. It left her open to anyone who went in that room. And I don't think that that's proper etiquette for a shelter to have. I understand that all the other dogs are under lock and key. So if you want to take one of the adoptable dogs out for a walk, you actually have to unlock the kennel and take the dog out. And it's most unfortunate that here is a dog who is being worked with to help better her life that was left in a situation that put her in jeopardy, and it also put a young child in jeopardy. So it's not that they were trying to do something that was wrong, it's just that it wasn't something that should have happened in the first place. It wasn't something that I can't even imagine. I mean, I have volunteered at other places besides Marion County Dog Shelter, and you don't leave a dog that needs additional training in a room that's unlocked without it being locked into another kennel. You just don't do that. And so, also, I feel that those people who left the dog there, and the person who allowed that practice, the tech and the manager, there should be some consequence for them if Rosie's put down. Because Rosie didn't have a choice in this matter. They are the ones that put her into this predicament, and that isn't fair for her. That I'm sure she didn't want -- I mean, if she was truly an aggressive dog, when that little boy came in the room, she would have went right after the little boy. But she didn't. From what I hear, again, the little boy had to come up to the kennel that was open. So that's something to think about. Because Rosie matters. I mean, she needs a chance to have a happy life. You know, from what I can tell, somebody dumped her at steps at Willamette Humane Society, just dumped her, and that's an illegal act. So already, it doesn't sound like she was being treated fairly by life, and it wasn't very humane. She needs to have a chance. And I don't think because of the way that she was treated and the predicament that she was put in without her choice, that she should lose her life for that. I just think it's horrible. If this happens, it would be, you know, man's inhumanity to an animal that can't speak for itself. I mean, it doesn't have the ability to be here today and say, "Hey, I was really scared." You know, a lot of animals, if they're not around kids, can be afraid. And often, the little toddlers, because they do unexpected movements, they make sometimes high-pitched sounds, you know, they can be very scary to a dog. So I would ask you to please see that Rosie gets a chance at going to a rescue. And I understand from other sources that once the dog leaves MCDS, that the liability will go with the shelter. And not with the shelter, but with the new rescue. And you don't have any more liability than what you have today, because it already has occurred. And my understanding, although I have made a public request for the record of the grandmother, I was denied, because I understand she didn't want the dog to be put down. Now, again, this is all from stories that I have heard, and I haven't been able to verify because no one will give me the information. But if I had had the chance to find out her name, I would have gone to her and said, "Would you please come and tell the Board of Commissioners what the story is and why you didn't want Rosie to be put down?" Because I think that's a major voice that needs to be heard, and because it's being obstructed, you can't hear that voice. And also, I can't hear that voice. So again, I would like to say that Rosie matters, that Rosie should go to a rescue, and that we hope and pray that humanity prevails, because Rosie matters. And please, again, think of her when you see that Rose. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item's a presentation. I've got highlights from 2017 Marion County Fair. Tamara Getch and Marion County Fair Board members. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Tamara Getch, and I'm messing with our PowerPoint, it looks like. All right. I won't touch it very much. I'm here today to talk to you about a fun event that's going to be happening next week. Annually, we hold the Marion County Fair. This year, it's going to be held on July 6 through the 9th, and we hold our annual fair at the Oregon State Fairgrounds. And we're just here to celebrate what our fair board has done over the last year in its planning efforts, tell the public a little bit about what we've got going on, and hopefully entice many of our viewers to come and join us for four days of fun in our local community. So this year, we have some standing activities that we have in place, and then we have some fun new activities that we're adding to this year's four days of fun. So we have our Rough Stock Rodeo. Each year, we hold a rodeo on Saturday evening that is coupled with a concert. And this year, we have Diamond Rio, who is coming to town on Saturday night. That will be a fun day of country. You can start out in our 4H barns and look at all the fun exhibits that the kids have been working on throughout the whole year. Join us at the rodeo and see how some premier cowboys have worked hard to produce and to prepare themselves to perform for our fair, and then end that evening with the concert. If Saturday isn't a day that works for your schedule, perhaps maybe Friday night, you can join us for Music with Night Ranger. So I didn't -- I'm not one that really knows band names, et cetera, but do know a few songs. And so, Sister Christian is one of the big songs for Night Ranger, so some folks may know that. So Friday, think of big hair bands. So we've got Night Ranger, and then we have Country, Cowboy Hats, and the like. And a formal addition, in the past couple of years, we've had this kind of quasi-partnership with Willamette Art Center. And this year, they have agreed to do every day until 8:00 p.m., they're going to be doing art displays. You can actually see them blowing glass, et cetera, during the fair each day. Again, as I mentioned, we have some standing things that we have every year. And that's we have the kids blow-up areas, where people can go up on the big blow-up slides and jump from heights that some people might be frightened by, other people are excited by, and all kinds of fun things going on there in our kids' zone. And then, all day on Sunday, we have a grill-off, and you can participate in the grill-off by going to our website and joining in on the fun. You can be an observer. And if you would like to know a little bit more, you can go to the website and learn more about that. And for the last couple of years, we've had this Muddy Paw Flyball Tournament. This is happening on Friday and Saturday in our Jackman Long Building, and it's just really a fun place to go, when you can see people who truly have this connection with their dog, and then how they, together, they perform these activities at the flyball tournament. It's just truly amazing. It's a fun way, especially, it looks like we're going to have some decent weather, so you can get out of the sun a little bit, go inside Jackman Long Building, watch these dogs perform, and just have a good afternoon. You might even want to get an ice cream cone and just go sit inside, right? And then, we also have our Real Heroes demonstration that is there. Public competitions in the past, folks may have known that as our open class. We've switched that name to public competitions to kind of let people understand, who haven't really touched fairs in the years past, understand what it's really about. This is an opportunity, if you're not a part of a club or any kind of formal group, you can go onto our website and find our competitions, and you can look and see what kind of competitions we have available, and you can enter something that you've done over the last year. And some of them have some restrictions of how long, for example, growing your own flowers. So some of us do that, and then we enter those into the competitions there. But it's a lot of fun, and it's a way to participate in the fair in a different way. And of course, we always have hands-on activities and the carnival going on. A new addition, though, this year is a pig race. So we're going to be doing that every single day and about every two hours. So we have partnered with a vendor who does this professionally, and they have a team of pigs that do this, and it's just a lot of fun. They have lots of pigs, so they're not exhausted all day long for four days, so there's lots of teams that they bring with them. And then, we also have the barnyard fun. So this is where kids can get up close and personal with barn animals, get to see them a little bit more, and understand how some of the barn animals that are in our barns that have been raised and cared for by our 4H and FFA youth members, what they look like when they're smaller, and what maybe perhaps what they're called, rather than a chicken, it's a chick that you might see in there, for example. And then, adding to our interests from the last couple of years, we have a whole host of STEAM activities. So STEAM is science, technology, engineering, art, agriculture, and math. And these are activities that we're going to hold all over the fairgrounds for kids and families to participate in, that encourage the development of those skill sets. So it's a fun way to participate in the fair. I like to call it, we're trying to develop the largest classroom in Marion County for about four days, and we're on about year two of this. So we're in the growing stages of this program. And of course, it's always fun to see the teen idol happen. So just looking at the snapshot, I won't go through all of these, but just looking at the snapshot, on Thursday is our opening day, Honor Day. This is where we bring forward our Joining Forces Veterans Event. We have a -- on the stage, we will have a veterans event, really recognizing and honoring those who have served in our communities and for our nation. And then, we will also be having those Real Heroes displays that we talked -- I talked about earlier. I do want to point out the cheesecake contest. So typically, this has been a Sunday event. We're adding this cheesecake contest this year. It's a special one, and we've asked Commissioner San-Brittano to be our judge. And this is specifically for...
This is where you come in and how fair I am. Would you drop a line for me?
But he also, then he can go right to the free health screening right afterwards.
There you go. That's right. That's right. So this is just blueberry cheesecake. So if you think you have a stellar blueberry cheesecake recipe, I encourage you to go to our website, register, and then follow the instructions under that competition, and bring your cheesecake for judging as instructed on that phone. And then, also, we also have the free professional photos. I know we all have phones these days, and we take all kinds of pictures, but very rarely do many of us take the opportunity to take photos. And this is a fun way to get family photos in a fun environment. And we have a great partnership with a local photographer that does this for us each year. Thursday will also be a lot of seniors on our campus, and it's fun to watch them do beanbag baseball, et cetera. They have a lot of fun doing it and being together. We're glad that they're joining us again this year. As I mentioned, on Friday, it's Awesome Day, so we've partnered with Salem Kaiser Education Foundation in their Awesome 3000 Run. And any youth who participated in that and is wearing their Awesome T-shirt can get into the fair for free that day. And we have, again, our photo booths, we have contests, again, we'll have more STEAM activities, social media games. That will be like a photo contest, et cetera. You can go online again to see all the contests that we have going on, trying to bring forward what our young people are doing that aren't necessarily in the position to raise an animal. How else can they participate in having fun at the fair? Agriculture Day is Saturday, and we will have our Home Depot Kids Workshop. This is a staple of our fair. It's a huge draw, and it couldn't happen without this partnership with Home Depot. We bring in hundreds of kids who just really enjoy the afternoon working on projects that Home Depot has graciously partnered with us to provide for our fairgoers. And we will have Benny the Beaver for our OSU fans and our 4Hers. We'll be walking the whole grounds, and we will have music on the stage all day long. Family Day is Sunday. So this is a day where we're going to have activities all over the place. Yes, it's only $9 to get in for an adult, but we want to make sure that your money, once you get through the gate, you have lots of activities that you can do without having to put extra monies into having more fun at the fair. So beyond just the carnival, we have lots of activities that'll be on the ground. We also are bringing in our superheroes again. They were a huge hit last year. Kids love seeing them on the fairgrounds, and they'll be taking photos throughout the day with them, whoever wants to take pictures there. One of my favorite is the 4H Small Animal Contest. They had last year a goat, a very small goat, in a Dorito bag outfit. So however they fit that goat in that Dorito bag, I have no idea, but it was really, really cute. And of course, as I mentioned before, our Grill-Off Competition. You can smell it from far away, and you can watch it up close and personal. This couldn't happen without all our amazing sponsors. Though the county provides a portion of the resources available through its general fund to support the county fair, it wouldn't be, like I said, it wouldn't be possible without the support and partnership of these sponsors. And needless to say, if we didn't have a small, mighty, dedicated board, seven board members for the fair, it wouldn't be possible. This is truly a working board. Though the staff works alongside them, they do so much of the heavy lifting, and I so appreciate working with them, as well as our key volunteers. And it's still time to buy pre-sale tickets. You can go to our website, I've put it up here on the PowerPoint so folks can see it, but it's MarionCountyFair.net. You can get pre-sale tickets, you can get pre-sale carnival wristbands. You can also find out what's going on, which day. If you didn't capture everything that I said, there's even more than what I covered here today. And then, there's also information on the competitions. And let me just also say, too, if the entry gate is a little steep for some families, we understand that. A fun way for families to be able to enter into the fair, on our website, under the competitions, there is coloring contests. So you can go in, doesn't matter what your age, you can draw down the age-appropriate coloring sheet, complete the coloring sheet. It can't just be scribbled and submitted. It really does need to be completed. Bring it in per the instructions, and then for that entry, you will receive a free ticket to get into the fair of the day of your choice. So it's an easy way. We try to make it a fun four days, make it easy for people to participate, and desirable for those in our community to support us. So I offer any kind of answers if you have questions.
I'm going to have some, but I'll pass right now, if you'd like. You have to have some comments on the fair. You kind of saved it. I'm going to tell them.
And then for that entry, you will receive a free ticket to get into the fair of the day of your choice. So it's an easy way. We try to make it a fun four days, make it easy for people to participate and desirable for those in our community to support us. So I offer any kind of answers if you have questions.
I'm going to have some, but I'll pass right now if you'd like. You have to have some comments on the fair. You kind of saved it. I'm going to tell them.
Well, this year, I have not done anything that I could say is the lion's share of work at all. We have a marvelous fair board that is just so hardworking. Anytime anyone signs up to be on the fair board, it is a hands-on, roll-up-your-sleeves kind of a job. It is not someone that sits in a room and just makes decisions from on high. And so I want to really express my appreciation. And our staff at Community Services works so hard to put this on every year. And it just gets better and better each year. So I want to thank Tammy and Denise and all of the staff that are probably, they're moving out, are they out on the grounds yet?
Denise has been there for over two weeks.
Right. And it's such a fun event. And I guess when people ask about the Marion County Fair, what I hear people say to me is that while we're on the state fairgrounds, it is a totally different experience. Probably more intimate, more family-focused, less commercial, as they say. I mean, the state fair is wonderful. But it's just, if you want to go to the county fair, it's not like you're just going to have a duplication of what you see at the state fair. It's a very, very different event. And we encourage everybody to go.
Thank you.
I'll add on just a little bit, because we really get to see what our, I'm going to focus on our youth in the county are doing and the wonderful things. And you don't get that in that dose from all the animals and artworks and different things. Kevin, do you have anything?
Yeah.
And what does that mean?
Are you playing Diamond Rio?
It's Sister Christian.
Oh, I should have known it immediately.
Diamond Rio will be fun, too.
I think there is, I'm so excited about the entertainment this year. And to have that be coupled with our local entertainment, we have some truly talented people in this community.
Yeah, it'd be good.
So I had them go first, Tammy, because I have one comment and a couple special requests.
Okay.
All right. First comment is, I want to make sure this cheesecake is only blueberry. That's what I signed up, and that wasn't clear up there.
Right. And I thought I had expressed that it is blueberry recipes for cheesecake. Go to the website, and this is for Thursday. There is a separate cheesecake on Sunday.
And I don't want to damage that or take away another dose of blueberry cheesecake.
You want all the, you want them all, right?
I do. So number two was, yeah. We'll have a special board meeting out at the fairgrounds next Thursday, a little change. Now, last year, Kevin kind of bonded with a turkey for obvious reasons. Do I have a picture of that?
I do have that on my phone, so I'll have to share that with you.
Well, I'd kind of like you to step up the game. I'm thinking goat this year. Just, and never mind, I don't need to say anything more. You can just fill it in. And then the special request, that's just really one. Can you put the fair off a week?
I think the sun's going to shine really bright on your property for the next five to seven days. Your flowers will be in bloom. They'll be gorgeous at fair.
There's not a sign of a petal. And I don't know how I can make something happen. I've considered going here next door, and, well, I would be probably wrong and purchase something. So then the other alternative is just to have a delayed growing, I mean, a delayed judging, because everybody should have the same problem I have.
Probably so. So I think you'll be in good company.
I've got those flowers in my yard.
Can I come over?
Sure. Have to be at night in the dark.
I guess I'm not getting any consideration here. But thank you, Tammy. I know this is an exciting time, an important time for our county to show off and recognize special people. And thanks for, you get paid, but still, thank you. But to the board especially, I know all the hard work they do and appreciate it very much. And I look forward to the event.
I think if you take all the hours that she puts in during this time of year-
Oh, she doesn't get paid?
Right. Well, I think it probably is close to minimum wage.
I think you're probably close.
She doesn't get overtime.
Thank you so very much, and I hope to see you all there.
Kind of a black and white goat, you know what I'm, never mind. All right, let's move on, and I'll try to get serious. Consent calendar, Commissioner Cameron.
I brought some extra water today because I got to get through this.
Turned out fair play.
It was, last week, I think, was a little bit longer, Commissioner. All right, and under consent calendar, first item is business services. First group is Business Services Approved Amendment Number Five to the Lease Agreement with Valley Office Buildings LLC by Pioneer Trust Bank to add $137,317.20 for lease payments and extend the Law Light Library Lease through June 30th, 2020. Am I done?
Just about.
Under Community Services, approve an order distributing video lottery receipts to promote economic development for fiscal year 2017-18 to the following. Grow EDC, $60,000. Oregon Garden Foundation, $100,000. Sedcor, $160,000. And Travel Salem, $100,000. Under Information Technology, approve the client's support and software agreement with Tyler Technologies, Inc. for $170,065 for the Assessor's Office Taxation Software Program. Under Health, approve the contract for services with TVW, Inc., DBA Sustainable Cleaning Systems for $200,000 to provide janitorial services to 10 health department locations. Also under Health, approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for $2,190,493 for the financing of public health. Under District Attorney's Office, approve an order appointing Dr. Douglas Eliason as the Marion County Medical Examiner. Under Juvenile, approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Youth Authority for $1,806,900 for basic and diversion services to reduce and prevent juvenile crime. Under Public Works, approve an order reappointing Wayne Rawlings to the Marion County Parks Commission with a term ending June 30th, 2021. Public Works, approve an order extending the term of the cable franchise agreement with Comcast Oregon One, Inc. until October 31st, 2017. Public Works, approve an amendment number one to the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation to add $910,833 to the 45th Avenue Bike Pedestrian Improvement Project. Under Public Works, approve amendment number one to the public improvement agreement with KNE Excavation, Inc. to add $240,913.20 to the St. Louis Road Rail Crossing Safety Project. Under Public Works, approve the materials price agreements for rock products used for maintenance activities performed by Public Works employees on Marion County's road system to the following. Allied Rock LLC Lions, Baker Rock, Malala, Crab Tree Crushing Dundee, Hup Farms, Silverton, KNE Excavating, Silverton, Knife River, Jefferson, Salem, Sherwood, Stateon, North Rock, Inc., Lions, P&amp;P Quarry, Salem, River Bend, Salem, River Bend Sand and Gravel, Salem, and Turner, and Windsor Rock, Kaiser. Last, under Public Works, approve the materials price agreements for asphalt, concrete, and asphalt cements used for maintenance activities performed by Public Works employees on the Marion County road system to the following. Baker Rock, Dayton, Knife River, Salem, and River Bend Sand and Gravel, Salem. Under the Sheriff's Office, approve amendment number three with the Oregon Judicial Department to add $17,215 for the Veterans Drug Court. And finally, under the Treasurer's Office, approve an order authorizing the Treasurer to invest all the rest of the funds in the county, no, excuse me, to invest in surplus county funds.
I'll second the motion.
Really? Thank you.
Well.
Did I do okay, Mr. Chair?
I asked Commissioner Carlson to reread a couple, and I made notes where I wasn't reading.
Where I made some mistakes?
Okay, it's been moved second to approve the consent calendar this morning. Any further discussion? I hear none, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. We have three action items and a couple of public hearings this morning. The first is, under the Board of Commissioners, consider a resolution regarding the Turner Downtown Renewal Plan. Gloria Roy.
Cecilyne Howard.
David Sawyer.
Cecilyne Howard is at the table. We do have a representative from the city of Turner to present the issue for Turner. I'm here to ask for any questions on the process or what the tax increment would be.
Good morning. David, go ahead when you're ready.
Good morning. I'm not sure if we had a confusion about the PowerPoint. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I appreciate your consideration this morning. As sort of simple background, city of Turner, just under 2,000 people, a few miles south of the city of Salem. Pretty vibrant community for many decades until a combination of changes in timber policy, road direction, and where people shopped turned our downtown basically into a large pile of vacant buildings. Right now, there are only four businesses that actually locate in the city's downtown. And the city has been working for some time to try and bring that back into a vital and sustainable business district. And that's why we've been pursuing urban renewal pretty aggressively this year. Our proposal really is to do a downtown revitalization. It's really focused on the central core. We did a study back in 2008 that initiated this process. And then the economy kind of fell out from under us. So we took a long pause. With the renewed economy and growth, we're seeing a lot of residential development. And now feel it's absolutely the right time to recreate a downtown to support that residential development. We've been in a process for the last six months, technical advisory committee with community members and business owners, as well as members from our local fire district participating. Had a very successful open house just three weeks ago at the Turnaround Cafe in downtown Turner. Had about 35 people. I can tell you that in 2008, when we did a public here meeting on initial thoughts on this, we had three. So quite a shift in energy. And the opportunity is very timely to sort of take advantage of this. This is a map of the district that we're proposing to create. It essentially composes all of the downtown area with Mill Creek bordering a large portion of it out to Fourth Street. The little peninsula to the north is where our fire district is located. As you well know, often, fire district negotiations are a part of an urban renewal proposal. We have signed or about to sign an intergovernmental agreement with them to provide some assistance for fire safety in the downtown so we can feel like we're supporting their goals and missions as well as the economic goals of the community. And again, in general, we're really trying to create, you know, a strengthened sense of place, a place where businesses can thrive and both visitors and local residents can participate in a more robust environment. Right now, there really hasn't been any place to even meet downtown. We definitely want to see the ability for us to leverage development dollars as well, not see urban renewal as a sole source funding, but use that in conjunction with partnerships, as well as grants and other resources that the city has access to, like Marion County Community Development Grants. It's definitely going to provide financing opportunity, not just for business support, but for blighted infrastructure. As you know, the definition of urban renewal is to try and remove blight. We have issues from sidewalks that are undergrade to stormwater systems that don't provide adequate flow, to flood levees that could be upgraded and certified to remove flood insurance requirements in the downtown business area. And all of those are incorporated into the projects that we hope to proceed within the plan. These are the categories of projects we're going to pursue. Project support, basically studies and analysis to provide marketing information of how we'll pursue business development. Infrastructure, again, both stormwater and street issues that need to be upgraded to really encourage development. Under Economic Development, we intend to proceed with storefront improvement loans immediately, once we get this approved. We've got a lot of poorly looking buildings in the downtown, and we need to upgrade our appearance. But in the long run, we want to build a business development center where we can help consult and guide small businesses to develop in our community. Under Public Safety, again, we have some fire protection issues because we have little buildings that need some fire safety upgrades. And also, money for flood mitigation is in this category as well. And of course, we've partnered with the county to pursue some of those projects outside of urban renewal. An amenity category is the kind of thing you see in a lot of downtowns nowadays. Sinage, entryway, gazebos, various things that make the area more attractive and more presentable, particularly for pedestrian use. And community facility, one of the old buildings downtown that's 100 years old, we hope to put a historic museum in that facility. And also to build an event center. We don't have any place where we can have events, either outdoors or indoors right now in the community. And once again, transportation, as things grow, we're going to need parking and renewed streetlights and other things in the transportation system. There's always a limit on what you can spend under urban renewal. So you approving a plan up to a certain amount. And for us, that's going to be $5 million. For larger communities, that doesn't sound like much, but it's $5 million we don't have. And it'll provide certainty for us to be able to begin spending money now in anticipation of those revenues coming in. Also, urban renewal is often an open-ended game. We've decided to put a sunset clause in our plan and project ordinance of 27 years, again, providing some guarantees to the local districts that they know this is going to go away at some point and all the revenue will flow back in their direction. And obviously, we all know there are impacts to other districts. The purpose behind urban renewal is to freeze current values, allow existing revenue to flow as it always has, but new assessed value to then be accrued by the urban renewal district to support the goals and projects in that area. The hope, of course, always, is that the growth that will be created by that accrued money in the urban renewal will both assist the urban renewal district, but also feed out into the other district areas so that everybody hopefully gets a boat that's going to rise over time. And certainly, it takes time to do that. It's not going to happen overnight. And those are just these large tables that we looked at at the last presentation. So for Turner, this is a critical part. And I think a 10-year effort online to build a sustainable community, when having only 2,000 people to work with and tax base, it's hard. We all know there are very few options for additional revenue. And bringing economic vitality to a downtown, whether it's Salem or Silverton or Turner, is an effort that takes a lot of resources and a lot of positive partnerships across the board. So we hope we get your support today. I'm certainly here to answer any other questions. And we look forward to implementing this over time and seeing a renewed community vitality in the downtown in Turner.
Questions or comments?
No questions, because we did get this presentation earlier from you, David. And I just want to thank you for your leadership in Turner and what you've done. I know since we've, I think, you got there right after I was in some other place that I don't want to talk about. You've done some really good things over there. And I really appreciate all the work that you've put in. And this is another step towards the right direction in helping that community.
Thank you. It's nice to be a part of a great team and moving things forward in a positive way.
So we had an opportunity at Management Update to see this presentation. And while it means that there's a little bit less money for Marion County and probably for the 4H district as well and some of the others, I think it's a worthwhile enterprise. Certainly is something that's critical for your community. And I think that it's important that we're supportive of it. So I appreciate you bringing it forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
I am supportive. But you make it sound like there's only 2,000 people. There must be 2,000 more coming real soon. I just drove through Turner. It's ready to boom.
Well, it is. And I think that's why the timeliness here is so exciting. I mean, when we had our open house, we had people that are interested in investing money in the downtown that came to that meeting spontaneously because of the mailings that we did. downtown, that came to that meeting spontaneously because of the mailings that we did. That's a game changer. I mean, when you can put some public money on the table and then talk to private investors that are going to bring dollars in, the money that we're going to use is going to be leveraged three, four, five times over. And you're right, there's definitely going to be a larger population, and we just want to have some businesses to serve with those people, and make them a part of the community as well. When you have businesses that can provide a place for people to meet and interact with one another, a lot of other positive community things start happening, so we're pretty excited at this point.
Yeah, so I'll go and make a motion that the board approve the resolution regarding the Turner Downtown Renewal Plan.
I'll second the motion.
I move to second to approve the resolution regarding Turner Downtown Renewal District. Any further discussion? Hearing that all in favor, then say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
The next item's under Health. Consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Human Services for $250,000 to provide in-home crisis respite services for children and youth. See Sydney, not Cindy Nester, and someone else.
Phil. That's right. Hello, thank you. I'm Sydney Nester from the Health Department, and...
And I'm Phil Blaugh with the Health Department, Children's Big Health.
So we're here to ask you to consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement that we received from the Department of Human Services for $250,000, and this came as a result of work done at the System of Care Executive Committee in order to look to community partners to share in the development of a broad spectrum of youth and family crisis services across Marion County. So Child Welfare has committed $250,000 over the course of two years to support development of crisis services. The nice thing about the money is that Child Welfare didn't limit its use to only children involved in the Child Welfare System, so it is a true commitment to support children who touch multiple systems, whose families are in crisis. So I'm going to let Phil talk a little bit about some of the ways that we might look to spend the money, and what Marion County is doing with our youth and family crisis services.
So what we're looking to do is actually create a children's and families crisis services in an array of services. We're looking to provide in-home responders who actually can go into the home and provide in-home crisis services to the families. If that's not available, then we're also looking to do ED diversion respite homes, as well as intensive case management. So those things haven't been available for families currently, and lots of different parts have been done by the psychiatric crisis center, but due to the efforts of the Regional Partners Executive Committee, there was a focus on how do we serve families in our community better, and this is a direct result of that. So we're looking to open those doors August 1st with a lot of community partners, Marion County looking at the crisis response options, looking at intensive family therapy, CCPC, and I can't remember the exact acronym. They're doing a lot of the respite, along with other array of services, with ED diversion, with our wrap services, and intensive case management, so.
Yeah, so I don't... And additionally, peer support will be provided through Oregon Family Support Network and Youth Move, and so potentially, some of the money provided from Child Welfare will be used to fund some of those services. No, sounds great.
Good. Sydney, I just have, no, don't just leave just yet.
Sure.
I'm just reading, and it surprised me a little, not opposed to it, but it says Marion and Polk Counties. Do we do a lot of stuff outside of Marion County under our programs, or is that the way it really is?
I think because Polk County is a part of the System of Care leadership structure that we have, we certainly don't want to limit access for Polk County families, so I don't know that we're actively soliciting families from Polk County, but certainly, should they show up in crisis and in need of support, they would not be turned away.
And I hope you realize Polk County's seeing a lot of Marion County families right now. It's almost more the other direction.
No, I didn't know that.
Not in this program, per se, but in some of the other adult mental health programs.
All right. Not opposed to it. I didn't say that. I was just surprised by it.
So, I think it evens out.
And you coordinate with your Polk County equivalent, I assume?
Absolutely. I mean, the staff working on the ground and the supervisors at the program levels in Polk and Marion County communicate regularly to make sure that services are really well coordinated for families, especially those families living in West Salem.
Great. All right.
All right, Mr. Chair. I will move that we approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Human Services for $250,000 to provide in-home crisis respite services for children and youth.
And I'll second the motion.
I move to second to approve the agreement with DHS to provide in-home crisis respite services. Further discussion? Hear anything, so then all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Now you can go. Well, here's a long list. In the Sheriff's Office, we consider approval of a contract for services with Bridgeway Recovery Services to provide Marion County reentry initiative services in the following: $228,000 for treatment and education, $165,578 for the Transition Center clientele, $258,790 for nonviolent property and drug offenders with medium to high risk, $378,220 for males released from prison for medium to high risk or substance abusing with a co-occurring mental health disorder, and $358,192 for qualified offenders with primary custody of minor children. Says the sheriff, I don't see him, but Jeff Woods here. Commander Jeff Woods, if you'd go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners, for a moment of your time. For the record, my name is Jeff Woods. I'm a Division Commander with Marion County Sheriff's Office, and hopefully, and hoping that you will renew some contracts with Bridgeway Recovery Services in our ongoing effort towards prison diversion and reentry services for our clientele who are living in Marion County. In terms of sort of a general overview of all these contracts and some of the similarities between the five contracts, and as I go through some of the specifics, I'll try to give them maybe program names that you all are more familiar with. In a general overview, the design of these contracts are to lower the recidivism rate and enhance public safety in Marion County for the approximately 3,600 clients that we have on supervision here in Marion County. I know that sounds like an overly simplistic answer. When you really boil that down, we're looking for people to maintain a clean and sober lifestyle. We're looking for them to be productive members in our community, get out of the criminal justice system altogether, and reunite with their family, get jobs and pay taxes, all very admirable goals. In terms of the contract with Bridgeway, generally speaking, what you'll see is a target population of medium-high-risk offenders. It's a bit of a cliche for me. As I look through our target population in the last biennium, as we approach the current biennium, we're really talking about high-risk clientele, the people most likely to commit criminal activity in Marion County. We have dosage requirements of Bridgeway, and it's not specific to Bridgeway, but what we try to do is track the number of cognitive-based hours that we have for our clientele. And what we shoot for, for a medium or high-risk individual, is about 200 to 300 cognitive hours during the course of their supervision. Research has been very clear that that provides for the best opportunity to lower recidivism and enhance our successes. For these contracts, they provide for a certified drug and alcohol mentor, a certified drug and alcohol counselor that provide both the group format and then the day-to-day activities working with our clients. One thing I should mention about Bridgeway Recovery Services is that with the passage of Senate Bill 267, which mandates evidence-based practices be implemented in publicly funded programs, where a requirement of about 75% for publicly funded programs must be evidence-based, the way that we do that is through the correctional program checklist. It's an evaluative tool developed by the University of Cincinnati to determine just that. Is a program effective? Does it embrace evidence-based practices? And we do these CPCs for all of our treatment programs, and Bridgeway Recovery recently had a CPC, and they had, and sometimes this doesn't sound as good as it should, a very high adherence to evidence-based practices. It's the highest classification you can get, and that's really the highest expectation we could have for Bridgeway. So although it doesn't guarantee that somebody entering their program will be successful, it certainly enhances that probability. For all these contracts, the funding comes from the state. You may be asking yourself that the state isn't quite done yet. We haven't had our finalized numbers, and I would say you are correct. If I could steal a parlance from the legislature, these are, think of it as a continuing resolution. These contracts are based on 15, 17 numbers, but we also have very good reason to believe, as we almost micromanage what's going on next door at the legislature, that one, funding for community corrections, and two, funding for justice reinvestment are proceeding, as we believe, and we do have very solid estimates for these funded programs. That said, they're not exact. Some of these contracts may have some amendments, but I would say we're probably about 90, 95% there with that funding. And again, what we don't want to do is disrupt service, because that would be a very problematic one for our clients, and considering some of the programs that I'll talk about in a moment that could be catastrophic in some circumstances. So as I get into these programs, for the $228,000, although it says education treatment, what that is, is our sex, or sorry, I keep saying sex offender instead of substance abuse, our substance abuse treatment program. I kind of call this our safety net treatment program for people who are on supervision, who don't qualify for any other program or specialty program. Over the last biennium, as an example, we've served over 600 people within this treatment program, so although it is a safety net, it does serve a lot of people that we supervise in Marion County. The Transition Center, the $165,000 for the Transition Center clientele, that is our jail reentry program. As you've all heard me talk about before, the jail reentry program is designed for people who are serving a local control sentence. That's a felony sentence of a year or less in our local transition center. This population tends to be younger. They're more impulsive. Their criminality is, I'll just categorize it in its infancy, and without some sort of intervention, and their addiction issues are profound, these people tend to escalate into more serious criminal activity. Our recidivism rate for this population has been one of the highest, in terms of one of the highest for the group that we compare ourselves to and against. In this program, since its existence, has had a fairly significant decrease in that recidivism rate, up to 1/3 for the target population. Moving on to the nonviolent drug and property offender, in the amount of $258,000, that is our Senate Bill 416 Prison Diversion Program. I believe the sheriff had mentioned this in a meeting yesterday, often called this program kind of the engine that drives our prison reduction strategies. It's a collaborative effort with the Sheriff's Office, the District's Attorney's Office, and Bridgeway Recovery Services to divert medium and high, and generally speaking, they're very high-risk clients who commit nonviolent drug and property offenses, who historically, under a Measure 57 sentence, go to prison. We divert that population from prison to community-based supports and treatment, so that they can be successful. And what we've seen from that population, I mentioned this during the budget presentation, so far, with this collaborative model that we have, this last fiscal year, we only had two people who were revoked on probation and sentenced to the DOC sentence. And again, it's been a very successful model. Often, Commissioner Carlson likes to show that graph that shows Marion County in the red in terms of prison utilization, and if you look at the most recent models, we're called what's in the green, which it means we've had a significant reduction of our prison utilization, yet been successful in the programming element that's provided by this contract, and also not increased recidivism, and we've enhanced public safety. Moving on to the next contract, in the amount of $378,000, that is our link-up program. That is a program that we have with Bridgeway, where people who are dual-diagnosed, those who have a substance abuse addiction and a mental health disorder, get transitional services within 180 days of release through Bridgeway, releasing confidential information, very legally so, with releases of information, so that, one, we have treatment transition planning, so that the person who's returning to our community, and again, that is sort of an angst-ridden moment for the individual, so that they know who their counselor's going to be, they know who their mentor's going to be, and probably most important, what medication are they on, so that as we transition from custody to community, there is no disruption in the medication maintenance. And finally, the last contract, in the amount of $358,000, that is our Family Sentencing Alternative Program. This came as a result of House Bill 3503 during the 2015 legislative session. This program began in January of 2016, and to date, has served 48, or sorry, 26 adults, 48 children. I often think of this program as sort of a sister program to our Senate Bill 416, where there's a lot of commonality in the target population, mostly nonviolent drug and property offenders. The caveat with the FSAT program is these children are involved with DHS, so we have almost an enhanced collaborative model with DHS, so that, one, we address the criminogenic risk factors with the parents, but, two, that those children are receiving services too, so they don't get caught up in that intergenerational cycle of criminality. And again, so far, we've only had, out of the 26, one person returned to prison. The parole probation deputy who's in charge of that program is very passionate about supporting the mostly women with children in this program, and she has done an absolutely exceptional job. As I wrap up, the last thing that I'll mention, and this may surprise the Commissioners, and it's not intended to, is there's now, in our contracts, or most of our new contracts will be coming forward, you might see a language about PRIA, Prison Rape Elimination Act. For those of you who may know, that came through federal legislation back in 2003, and what it really is designed for, even though it says prison, it's a bit of a misnomer. Whether you're arrested in the community, lodged in our jail, serving a sentence in our Transition Center, or on community supervision, this law impacts us as a Sheriff's Office, and impacts every division within the Sheriff's Office. As you might imagine, the intent of the bills to prevent, eliminate any sort of sexual misconduct for people who are involved in the criminal justice system. Over, I'll say, the last five months, the Sheriff's Office, through the contract we have unrelated to these contracts with the Department of Corrections, required us to be PRIA compliant. These are generally very good things, and we were happy to do that. And we had an audit in, I believe, January or February of this year, and we actually just got the final report from the auditor just yesterday, and the Sheriff's Office is fully compliant with PRIA. Related to these contracts, we now need to require our contractors, our volunteers, and our vendors to, one, be aware of the law, and, two, know how to respond, so that there'll be some training that they receive. It's not very thorough. It's only about 15 to 20 minutes, just to know what to do if they have any suspicion for any sort of sexual misconduct, who to report to, and that we have a zero tolerance for that. So with that, I think I've taken a lot of your time. I appreciate the moment. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
No, thank you for bringing this forward. This is certainly a big piece of what we do in the reentry initiative and the justice reinvestment initiative. We had a meeting yesterday that deals with, I think, some of the money that potentially will be in these contracts, so very supportive.
Jeff, excuse me. Mr. Chair, thank you. Jeff, this is just a renewal of an existing, I mean, we're just, we've been doing this contract for several years, right?
We've been doing...
These contracts?
Depending on the specificity of the contract, I'll say anywhere from four to six years, in some cases even longer.
Right. Good work.
All right, I think we're ready for motion.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the contract for services with Bridgeway Recovery Services to provide Marion County reentry services, and I won't read all of that.
Thank you.
But the various dollar amounts and the purposes are listed on the agenda.
Sir, a second.
Oh, yeah. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. So, it has been approved in second. Either way, do approve the contract for services with Bridgeway Recovery as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing that all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. That motion passes. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two public hearings listed. After 9:30, I'll open the first public hearing, which is to consider an application for a mass gathering. It's case number 17003, White Wind Woodland LLC, Clerk's File 5725. Brandon Wright, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Brandon Wright.
For the record, I'm Brandon Wright, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. The item before you is the application of White Wind Woodland LLC for a small mass gathering permit on exclusive farm use zone property located at 6518 Cascade Highway Northeast Silverton. The property is located on the south side of Cascade Highway, on the southwest corners Cascade Highway and Valley View Road. Surrounding properties consist of properties in farm use and timbered property in an EFU zone. The applicant is requesting to hold a Renaissance-era fair and a Wild West show as a small mass gathering. The event would take place over four weekends in July and August 2017, July 22nd, 23rd, July 29th, 30th, August 12th, 13th, and August 19th, 20th. Estimated attendance is between 1,500 and 2,000 people. Based on this information, the proposed event meets the definition of a small gathering. According to the information submitted with the application, sound amplification will be used, alcohol will be available, and fireworks will not be used or shown. The applicant states sound amplification will be used during the jousting shows daily at noon and four, and during the Wild West for gun shows and a possible Civil War reenactment. There will be no amplified sound after 11:00 p.m. or before 9:00 a.m. on any day. The mass gathering ordinance requires the applicant to coordinate with various governmental agencies to ensure there are adequate facilities and services available. These agencies include Marion County Public Works, the sheriff, environmental health, risk management, and the local fire district, which in this case is Silverton. Each of these agencies was provided with a copy of the request and given an opportunity to comment on its requirements. All of the Marion County agencies approved the plans submitted by the applicant, or have requested final permits prior to the date of the event. The Silverton Fire District requested that the applicant allow it to inspect the property prior to the event. The board has the options to, one, continue the public hearing, two, close the public hearing and leave the record open, three, close the public hearing and approve, deny, or modify the proposal. Staff recommends the board close the public hearing and approve the request, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. With that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Well, I'll throw one in here, Brandon. I thought, on the more routine and reoccurring ones, that we'd kind of streamlined this process.
We are—we have a—we have a proposal in the works. We should bring that to you in two or three weeks as an ordinance that the board can modify this. So in the future, there'll be a possible five-year approval. The first year will be a public hearing, and then the subsequent four years will be renewals issued by the planning director.
Not that I don't enjoy our annual visit, but—
So as we have more experience with these, and we found out that the impacts we can—we can manage probably without a public hearing, that we've got a new option that's—it's on its way, it's almost here, but it didn't arrive in time for these these years public—these mass gatherings, unfortunately.
All right, thank you. Should follow procedure here, and just wait a little bit. The applicant has an opportunity to speak next, if you'd like to—
Hi, my name is Nancy White. I've been in front of you now for eight years. We're still doing it. I suppose I should start the chat with greetings, my lord, my ladies.
Thank you.
Fair day to you. Or, howdy, how you doing?
Yeah, I was gonna ask you about that. You've added Wild West, that—
Aye, yeah. You know, I'm a professional horseman. I ride professionally, and—but not waster, I write English. But anyway, it is something that what I have in mind basically is fair, 1840 to 1900. That includes a wild Bill stunt show, trick roping, trick riding, sharpshooting, quick draw. All these people who are doing it do it, you know, not necessarily professionally, but certainly do it practiced, and, you know, I'm sure they're all—you know, a lot of them are amateurs, some of them are professional. My trick ropers or riders are coming down from Canada, and I'm hoping to get some people up from Mexico, or not up from Mexico, but to Mexican chara, and see if I can get them to ride too. So that'll make my show an international show. But basically, nobody in the Northwest is doing what I have in mind. So it's not a rodeo, it's a Old West show.
All right. Anything else? Now, are there questions from the board?
Did we already talk about—our—do we have a process where we don't do this every year?
We just went—
You just went through that, okay, sir.
We'll have it before the board to consider in two or three weeks. We're just—we're just ready to get that to you now.
Oh, okay. All right.
So, Mr. Chair, so—I know we proved this before. We moved—you moved locations this year, or was that last year?
No, last year, I did.
Last year, okay. This is the second year in the new location, then?
Aye, and I—we ended up buying it too, so I'm not renting it from anybody. It's my land.
Great. So, Mr. Chair, I will move that we close the public—oh, wait a minute.
That's fine.
Are you ready, Brandon?
I have nothing further. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'll move that we close the public hearing and consider an application, approving an application for mass gathering, case number 17-003, White Wood Woodland LLC, Clerk's File Number 5725.
I'll second.
All right, so we moved, seconded that we close the public hearing and approve the application, mass gathering has just been presented. Any further discussion? Don't hear any, then all in favor, say aye.
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 Huzzah!
Pardon me?
Huzzah!
Oh, yes.
Which is 1,500's talk for hooray!
And Civil War stuff, too.
Did she address you as my lord? That's all I wanted to hear.
Would that trouble you?
I did.
I just—okay.
It's a lot of fun. Try to come out if you can, it's—it's a good show.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, and good luck with it.
Aye, thank ye.
All right, hearings closed. We'll now open our second hearing in the morning. It's a public hearing to consider zone change comprehensive plan, case number 17001, Sharab Barren—I may say that wrong, I apologize—Clerk's File 5724. Joe Fenimore.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore. The item before you today is an application to change the zone from exclusive farm use to acreage residential with a 10-acre minimum lot size, and to change the comprehensive plan designation from primary agriculture to rural residential on a 7.43-acre parcel located in the 11,700 block of Carl Road Northeast, Woodburn. The property is located in the northeast corner of the intersection of Highway 99 and Carl Road. It contains a well, field, and a paved area where a fruit stand once stood. Adjacent property to the southwest across 99E is within the Woodburn UGB and city limits. Other properties on the west side of 99E are zoned EFU and consist of small parcels in residential use and some larger parcels in farm use. Directly north of the subject property are small parcels in residential use. Property to the east and southeast is zoned AR and contains mobile home parks. Property to the south, across Carl Road, is zoned EFU and consists of small residential parcels. And a large AR zone mobile home park parcel abuts the property on 99E south of the subject property. The hearings officer held a public hearing on the application on March 22nd, 2017, and on May 18th issued a recommendation that the board approve the request if additional satisfactory information is submitted. The property is subject to statewide planning goal three, agricultural lands. In order for the request to be approved, the applicant must justify an exception to this goal. In this instance, the applicant proposes an irrevocably committed exception to goal three. This type of exception is based on the concept that the lands surrounding the subject property has developed to such an extent that the property itself is irrevocably committed to uses other than resource use. The hearings officer conducted a very detailed review of the applicable goal exception criteria and identified three items where additional information is needed. In finding nine on page six of the recommendation, the applicant indicates that the property is burdened with an existence of a 10-foot-wide stormwater sewer easement running along its northern property line. The hearings officer indicated it would be helpful if that easement could be depicted on a map or aerial photograph. Regarding the soils analysis, as part of that same finding, the applicant should explain what the base acreage was used and how the soil calculations were determined. Finally, in finding 14, ending on page 14, the hearings officer indicates that the applicant needs to provide supporting evidence showing why the property cannot be managed for profit in money from farm use. The hearings officer then reviewed the applicable comprehensive plan policies and zone change criteria, and included that of all the exceptions, if the whole exception is justified and granted, the comprehensive plan policies and zone change criteria would be met, and the application could be approved. Additional information for consideration has been submitted, and the applicant will present it to the board shortly. The board has the options of continuing the public hearing, close the public hearing and leave the record open, close the hearing and approve, modify, or deny the request, or remand the matter back to the hearings officer. And I'll be happy to try and answer any questions.
Are there other questions?
So, I'm just trying to make sure—so there is information that was provided since the hearings officer hearing to respond to each of these?
That is correct.
And staff reviewed that?
Staff has.
And you—wait, does this respond to the issues that were addressed in the hearings officer's report?
It does.
Okay, so there's no additional information that you would say is needed to be able to justify the land use request?
That is correct.
Okay.
I'm just finding it. It's not too close a relation in this transaction, a trustee. And a map—I mean, an aerial would have been nice to have in the file somewhere.
They said they submitted one.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, they provided it.
Oh, good. I need—where did you find it?
It's in your packet.
Exhibit A right here.
Probably should be in the file, too, I don't know.
Anyway, I'll look at that, I'm real familiar with the area. And are there other questions or comments?
It's on page 33 of 44 on your P D.
Thank you. Are there other comments or questions for Joe?
No, right now.
All right, now, the applicant would like to come. We have one person signed up, it looks like—that—well, I really can't read it, but it looks like Rebecca, maybe?
Rebecca.
Good.
Good morning, my name is Rebecca Dorman. I'm the representative of the applicants, Mr. and Mrs. Sharabaren. And I just am here to answer any questions, it doesn't sound like there are any, or if you'd like to see the aerial photograph, I think I could—
I know it real well, I'm sorry, but I just want to make sure what it looks like. There it is.
But just in general, the property is pretty much surrounded by uses that are not resource uses. I don't think that this sets any kind of dangerous precedence for this happening or happening or being repeated, if that's a concern. The situation and the conditions for this application are unique, I feel.
Rebecca, from my sake, and since we didn't really get it, what were the things that you presented after the hearing that were relevant to the case?
Sure, so the hearings officer requested information about—she wanted to see an aerial photograph where the easements were. There's a stormwater easement that's about 10 feet in width that runs east to west. It takes stormwater from a mobile home park that's next door to this parcel, underground to an outflow drainage in Highway 99 East. So we just kind of showed that rudimentary on an aerial photograph. And then the—and I also attached an eas—the easement, the actual easement that's recorded. And then we also went back to the gentleman who did the soils analysis to ask him how he came up with the base acreage, and determined that he just used an aerial photograph that he got online without the property lines. So we provided the property lines to him, and he recalculated. So I think originally he came up with 6.45 acres as the base acreage for this parcel. After actually going with the property lines, he came up with 6.7 acres, and the county assessor shows 7.43 acres. So the property that's actually in farm use, or that's being—that's planted in berries, is probably closer to six acres than 7.43. So it's a very small amount of land. So we showed that. We also showed that there's been a deed of about .4 acres of the parcel to ODOT for Highway 99 that I don't think has been taken into consideration. So the property is probably more on the low seven side acre size. And the third thing that we provided was just some more information about income. The standard, based on Lubbock cases and administrative rules, is that it has to be—if there's a gross profit, and—so instead of a net profit, that's the standard. And the property does make a profit, but not when you subtract out expenses. So we showed what the expenses are, and it's basically an annual loss of about $19,000. So we detailed those expenses that go into planting the field and maintaining it. And then we also showed some financial kind of obstacles to doing something different on the property. So if berries don't make that much money on the property, and that's the issue, if we planted something else, what would be the cost? And it's just not something that is a good decision, a good financial decision to do on this parcel, because the surrounding area and conditions will still be there, even if you change the crop. So that's the additional information we provided.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, I think that's all, Joe. Well, I want to make sure that—and we didn't specifically lay them out in the last hearing—that there were conditions, and I assume they're in those. Are there any conditions with the recommendation here?
The only—the only condition was recommended was by Public Works for additional right-of-way dedication along Carl Road prior to issuance of a building permit. I have talked to the applicant's attorney about that. They do not contest that condition if you want to place that condition on—
So we should mention it?
Yes.
For the record?
Yes. And if you want that added, then I will work with the applicant to make sure the wording meets their satisf—to their satisfaction.
Mr. Chair, I think I also read in the file the condition—there was a condition, no more access on 99.
That is—that is something that Public Works already has in place.
Okay.
So that doesn't need to be a separate condition, that'll be—that—that's part of their their driveway review process, right now we'll present that. The same way, like, when a building permit's applied for in this zone, this new zone, they'll be required to do a declaratory statement, because there is farm zoning around them. We don't have to make that a specific condition here, because that will apply regardless. It's already in the zone code.
Okay, so then you'll be coming back with what?
An ordinance.
An ordinance, that's what I wanted to double-check, all right. And so in the ordinance, it will state the condition?
We'll have the ordinance, and the condition will be in exhibit, probably.
In exhibit, okay, great.
Generally.
All right, we're ready for motion, then?
I am.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I would move that we close the public hearing and approve the zone change comprehensive plan request. This is case number 17-001, Sharabaren—how do you say it? Sharabaren?
Thank you.
Clerk's clerk's file number 5724, and direct staff to come back with an ordinance that includes the condition that we've just discussed.
Right-of-way.
Right-of-way condition.
And I will second that motion.
All right. Didn't catch the first part, but I'm going to say it's removed and seconded to close the public hearing and to approve the zone change comprehensive plan, case 17001, Sharabaren. Direct staff to come back with an ordinance that includes the conditions that we've been discussing. All right, anything else? Does that capture it? Okay, any other questions? You're good, Kristy? All right, call a question, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody seemed happy back there, and that pleases me. All right. That's the end of our business, except to read where we'll be. And this is a—if the consent calendar was a long list, this is a short one.
Can I read that one?
You want to?
Yeah, no.
Wednesday, noon to two, the Insight Board of Directors and Midwolamit Jobs Council Annual Meeting at Insight Boardroom 626 High Street Northeast, Suite 305 in Salem. You two will be going to that—this is on the list, I have a travel Salem board meeting. They'll be happy that we sent some funding their way again. I think they've really been doing a great job in—really kind of leading the area effort on the Eclipse thing, which is getting bigger and bigger, so it'll be an interesting meeting. We'll be closed, this might be hard to believe, in observance of the Fourth of July holiday on Tuesday, the fourth, it says eight to five. On the fifth, Wednesday, calendar review, 8:30 to 9:00, Silverton Conference Room, Fifth Floor, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. And then a noon meeting in Woodburn, from noon to one, Woodburn Marion County Meeting, Luis's Taqueria, 523 Front Street in Woodburn. So, didn't take as long as hearings usually do, so let's talk about—I know you probably want to sing "America the Beautiful," I'm not going to allow it on television, but tell me about activities for— me about activities for the Fourth of July, because I really want to tell you about mine.
I'll be in Texas.
Texas? Do they do the Fourth of July there?
I think so. They probably do it bigger than anywhere, because Texas is so big, right?
I think they have their own independent state down there.
You don't think they celebrate the Fourth of July in Texas?
Oh, yeah, they do, but they have a bigger one.
Maybe we should assign you to come back with a report. Would you check in, do it for us, and make sure they're, they're square in Texas?
Oh.
And you, Detroit Lake, I presume?
Oh, yeah, fireworks over the lake this Saturday night, and there's a big fundraiser up there Friday night, open to the public. All they have to do is pay to get in, and they can donate money towards the fireworks. And the fireworks, they spent about $14,000 on that show up there. So, yeah, that'll be Saturday night, on the, whatever day, is that the first?
Yeah, there's a good one, in Silverton, always on the third, too, fireworks display. So mine's a rodeo, it's the annual deal. I'm cutting you off, too bad.
No, I got invited this year, but it's, I can't, because my family's going to be up there, and I really wanted, I haven't been, like, you're talking about St. Paul?
Yeah.
I haven't been probably in 20 years, and I really wanted to go, and-
Might have an extra ticket, no?
I know, I could, I got invited, I have a ticket, but I just can't. I'd be in trouble if I left.
It's family and friends, we stay, it's in the corner, in the shade, and it looks like it's going to be nice weather. But here's what's been bothering me, I think I'm getting old. I used to, it's barbecue chicken dinner, and strawberry shortcake, and all the beer you can drink, and it used to be all the beer-
Where's that?
Yeah, all the beer you can drink got my attention, but now, now I care more about the shortcake, so I don't know what that means. Old Fuddy-Dud comes to mind, and that's, that's about it.
Well, it's shortcake and, you know, blueberry.
Never heard of blueberry shortcake. They can do that.
Blueberry cheesecake.
To look into. Anyway, it's a, it's a fun time, and the rodeo's big, boy, they got it looking good. I've seen, just on Facebook, with the work they're doing, looks brand new and shiny. Nobody's in parades anywhere?
The mayor of St. Paul came to French Prairie last week, it was good to see him.
And they're still pleased, I hope?
I think so. I think. I haven't heard any more about their water problem up there, have you?
No. No. All right, anything else? Just Texas. Gloria, we'll let you in on this. You got Lynn County report.
Well, I've got my niece and nephew-in-law, my great-niece are coming to visit. They'll be arriving tomorrow, so they'll be visiting for a few days.
Have they been there before?
No.
Oh.
So that's there.
Well, they had to like it, things are nice and green, grass fields are just ready to go, I think.
Right, and they'll, then heading over to Bend for the Fourth, but-
That's not quite as good, but-
I'll be in Lynn County, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll be holding, holding down the farm.
You know, just if you've got nothing to do.